No, you're fine.
All right, we're good? Okay, welcome everybody to the Shelburne Planning Commission on January 10th, 2019. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Dick, seconded by Stephen. Any comments? All right, all in favor as listed? Okay, now on to the approval of the minutes from December 13th. Motion to approve these minutes?
I'd move to approve the minutes.
Moved by Stephen. Seconded by Susanna. All right, any discussion?
Good to me.
Yeah.
Really see anything either.
I actually didn't have any comments at all. Crushing it. Great. If no comments, then all in favor as noted?
Aye.
All right, so next, any disclosures relating to anything on the agenda tonight with conflicts of interest? Seeing none? All right, open to the public? Imagine you might be here for something on the agenda? All right, so, okay.
We'll try to adjourn.
If you can give it at least an hour.
I'll adjourn.
All right, so moving on to zoning matters then. Do, well, the first is the public hearing, so I don't believe, well, I won't say that. Is there, well, I'll ask Dean, is there any discussion that you're aware of that we need to address besides moving forward with this administratively?
Administrative?
Yeah, just to see if there was anything we need to be aware of and then we can...
No, nothing has popped up. I didn't prepare a presentation. You've had several and the text is in the packets, so I think after giving sufficient time for public comment, you could entertain the motions.
Yeah, and this is where the rules don't work with my brain. Do I need to call for anything or it's just an open discussion?
You can just declare the hearing on the proposed zoning amendments open and then ask if there are any comments.
I declare...
If it's crickets, declare it closed.
I declare the hearing open if there are any comments from anyone.
That could be as simple as, "Yeah."
We have to worry about the 7:25 time on the agenda.
The note, Dick was wondering about, because it's warned at 7:25, it says times listed are estimates only.
Okay.
I mean it.
Just question.
Yeah, I think recognizing that we've discussed this previously, there are no comments here from the public or anybody on the board?
I do have one comment.
Okay.
Actually, no, I'm not even going to make it.
All right, that was easy.
Yep.
You're really working on that hour plan, aren't you? Okay, so then if there isn't any discussion, then I'd accept a motion to close the public hearing. And the text is on one of the pages if somebody wants to jump on it.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, does that statement have to be read in full?
It would benefit, well, Mary Ann has a copy of the packet. Yeah, so she has a copy of the entire packet, so she has the wording if you want to make a reference to it.
I can do it if you want. Either way.
Sure.
I move that the public hearing on the proposed changes to the zoning bylaw which may be summarized as changes that would allow limited expansion of certain structures encroaching on front yard and side yard setbacks in the rural zoning district, which was duly warned for this evening, be closed.
Excellent, all in favor?
Aye.
Was there a second? I heard Dick.
All right, moved by Dick, seconded by Susanna. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm just hearing Mary Ann going, "Who seconded it?"
That's fair. Okay, and then next is a motion to approve forwarding. You want to keep going?
Sure. I move that the proposed changes to the zoning bylaw consisting of changes that would allow limited expansion of certain structures encroaching on front yard and side yard setbacks in the rural zoning district be forwarded to the select board for its consideration and action along with a copy of the associated bylaw change report.
All right, moved by Dick.
Seconded.
Seconded by Stephen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we can move that forward to the select board and thank you everyone for their time and input. Excellent. Yeah.
In terms of timing, the next select board meeting is Tuesday. I'm not sure that it will be possible to get it in their packets for them to formally receive it. We'll try, and if not, it would be a week later.
Okay.
Good fortune.
Uneventful is good, right?
Enjoy the good evening.
Yeah, stay warm out there. All right, and now we can move on to form-based zoning. And Dean had prepared three case studies to help reorient us with this, and I imagine that those who missed this could catch it on the video as well. The idea behind this is to get us back into form-based zoning discussions. The overall regulations are, there's a lot to them, and the fact that they are currently, they're optional, so our current bylaws are there, and our long-term view is to really consolidate. So these discussions are to ease us back into form-based zoning, and then as we start getting into language and streamlining, hopefully this will make that easier. There you go. And just to check, are you mostly here for the climate initiative part at the end or interested in form-based zoning as well?
I'm interested in the last thing.
All of it? Excellent. Okay, well, we're cruising along, so right now we're just going through the form-based zoning stuff.
So I have a slightly longer set of slides than what was included in the packet, and maybe we can use that to just...
Yeah.
And my thinking, as was mentioned in the memo, that case studies would be a handy way to get people back into the topic. And as it's been mentioned, that there are three that I want to cover. Basically, it's a set of three, one that you could say worked, one that didn't work, and one that hasn't had a chance to work, or maybe could work with some additional changes. The first one is located at 2916 Shelburne Road, which is in the northern part of Shelburne Road on the west side, and it involved a couple of parcels that were merged. There was a single-family house and a garage on the property that I believe spanned the two parcels that had been effectively used as one. And the project is a 10,000-square-foot mixed-use building, two-story, 5,000 square feet on each floor. The person who's doing the project has a carpet cleaning business and associated business activities related to that, and wants to put apartments on the second floor, and under the form-based zoning, they can actually do six apartments, and they would be of varied types, everything from efficiencies, I think, to two or three, to three bedrooms maybe. And it would get access from the north, Side Street, which enters Shelburne Road, Route 7. All of the parking would be provided on-site, including bicycle parking, so as part of the form-based zoning process, it's supposed to be easier, supposed to be more predictable, a lot more, you do all the items on the checklist and you can anticipate getting approval quickly. Well, one of the items on the checklist is parking for bicycles, so they made a point of having that. Something else that they are doing as part of this plan is something called tandem parking. The form-based zoning regulations have a feature that we haven't had in our zoning before that relates to basically stacked parking. So with the review by the Development Review Board, you can actually get a number of spaces that you wouldn't ordinarily, you wouldn't expect customers of a shopping center or something like that to use all of those stacked places. But because of the nature of this business, there are vehicles related to the business, stacked parking makes perfect sense for them. So stacked parking, it's something that we probably wouldn't be talking about with form-based zoning, were it not included in this very first project.
And just to clarify, I imagine this just means like a double-deep space?
Yep.
Not, yeah.
Yep.
Right.
So there is, okay, whoops, stacked parking.
Mm-hmm.
So going on, this is a picture, this is not a terribly good picture unless I blow it up, showing the site, but basically, as I had described, two lots that had had a house and a garage on them, Palmer Court, Clearwater, it's kind of a weird hairpin street situation, two very closely placed streets, and that's the access. There's actually also a private drive along the southern boundary that is not, this property does not gain access from, but could at some point in the future.
Dean, is that the plan of the existing condition?
That's existing, that's the existing condition.
It's not built yet, is it?
It's not built yet, no, no. There's been kind of a, I'm making a simplifying assumption, the person who did the project did a lot of the permitting himself, and he let something lapse, so he's actually redoing, but he spent a lot of time gaining his state permits, and because they took so long, he didn't do something else that needed to be done by a certain deadline, and actually is coming back to the DRB, but only for the lot merger. It'll probably start construction this summer, if not earlier. So in terms of where we're talking about, in terms of the form-based zoning, we have in the form-based zoning the regulating plan, which is essentially the zoning map for the form-based zoning, which has character districts, and the character district that applies to this northern portion of Shelburne Road is called the mixed-use street, and it has its specific set of criteria in it. And then this lot also fronts on this red area, and that's a feature that we have in the regulating plan, that are different parts along Route 7 that have this frontage zone, and there's an additional set or different set of requirements that are in place there. And the idea of the frontage zones is that those are really supposed to be the core, the core areas, the places that you would really see as the centers or would feel like the centers. And so there are requirements having to do with two-story buildings and active land uses on the ground floor, so that you're not staring at a kind of a blank wall, but instead are looking at a business that is kind of speaking to the public, for lack of a better term. But this is the area that we're talking about. Keep going quickly.
It's a, it's a house with a garage.
Is that the daycare?
It's not a daycare.
Small business seating and stuff, reupholstery. I believe that's...
I, I'm not sure that there, there may be a small home business in it, or it was historically, but I think...
It's just a little house. I looked at it on Google Earth today, it's just a little.
Yeah.
It's a house you wouldn't expect it to be a business.
Yeah.
This major business may not be there, but he started there.
So continuing on, the thing that I wanted to do is to use this first case study as a way to introduce this idea that we have the map, and usually what we do when we are looking at our zoning map is we say, "Okay, the map, what district?", and then you usually go to the requirements for that district and you see what the uses that are allowed are. And if you want to be building a pharmacy, you need to check whether or not pharmacy is an allowed use. In the form-based zoning that Shelburne has adopted, you don't go that step, you go from the map to this table, which is a table that shows which types of buildings are allowed in each character district.
Could you enlarge on that just a little?
Sure, sorry. So this is an important table for people who are using the form-based zoning regs, because as I was saying, they identify the district, the character district, and then they see which one they're talking about, in this case, it's the mixed-use. And we see that most of the dozen or so building types are allowed. The building type that's not allowed in that district is a single-family house or a cottage court, so it's not a single-family residential area in terms of the form-based zoning, as far as building types are concerned. But all of the other building types are possible in that. And we'll come back to this table maybe. So in this particular case, as I mentioned, there are a dozen or so, 11 building types. So within the form-based zoning regs, there are a series of pages that are part of Figure 1.4.7 that have the building types. And so the building type that was most suitable for the kinds of things that Clint West wanted to do is building type six, which is called the mixed-use storefront. So the way that these pages are set up, one page for each building type, is the same. There's a description, there are these character examples, these photographs that are really just intended to give a sense of what the building type is like. And then below that, on the left-hand side, are a series of numerical requirements, and on the right-hand side is a graphic that illustrates it. And this is not the best graphics quality, I'll say, but we have these tables, and in some of the, some of the lines, so as far as the lot standards are concerned, there are standards such as the lot width or the frontage, the lot depth, the lot area, so those are kind of similar things to what you're used to dealing with. Then there are setback requirements and so on. What I was going to say is that in some of these standards, there's a letter to the side, and what you're supposed to be able to do is to refer from that letter to the graphic to see it depicted. So you have an understanding that, oh, well, when we're talking about the front yard setback, it's as what we would see here, pretty intuitive, you know, you would know it already, but it's a graphical representation. Some of these things are less clear.
Dean, can you just explain to us just briefly what those different rectangles and lines?
Sure.
The shaded areas that overlap?
Yep.
Are represented.
So in this particular building type, which is a commercial type, it's, the lot frontage is here, the setback, I should say, is five feet. Now, something I need to explain, and I don't want to get into the weeds too much, but there are cases where these building-specific numbers are changed depending on whether or not you're in a frontage zone. So that's something, just to understand that these are not the be-all and end-all. In some cases, the way it was written originally and approved, there are two sets of numbers. Now, I believe that when the work was done by Brandy Saxton, we've taken care of those differences, that I think the decision was in most cases to not have it look like it's one set of numbers and then actually be overwritten by a different number, because it could be confusing to someone if they're looking at this and then they think that they can do a building type, but then there's a greater setback that's required as a result of the character district or a frontage zone. But the lot width, which would be also comparable to the frontage the lot would be required to have, this is the setback. So another really significant feature of the form-based zoning is a quality known as the frontage zone and the build-to line. Think of it as a maximum setback. So we're used to having a minimum setback, you know, you can't be any closer than. The form-based zoning has these build-to zones as a way of requiring buildings to be deliberately towards the front of the lot. But instead of having it be a single line that every building would have to have the front face of the building along, it's defined as a zone, so you basically have a range. So that's what's going on here, Stephen, is that the gray area, I don't have a pointer, but the gray area in the front is representing that build-to zone. So this...
That darker area that's sort of purply?
Purple, yes.
Purple area?
Yeah. So this, this particular example, if this is the building footprint, is going right up to the closest point, but if they had wanted to, to slide it back, they could have slid, but they couldn't have slid it back further. That would have been the extent of it.
So if they have more depth, they can move it back?
Even if they have more depth, no, because...
I mean, they can move it back to the back of the purple?
They can move it back to that, right.
Right.
But they wouldn't be able to go beyond that because the judgment has been made that the regulations need to have the buildings, including buildings of this type, located closer to the street to help create that position and scale. So we're going to see some more of these and we'll come back, but if I can, I'll just keep, keep going. There are additional standards included that have to do with building height. There are, there are different levels or layers on this, and we can maybe drill down, but there are maximum and minimum building height that are specified for these building types, or at least some of them, and in some locations, there are roof pitches required in certain places. There's a building footprint maximum in this particular case, so this building type is not to be used to create a building with a building's footprint of greater than 15,000 square feet. So a bunch of design-related standards that you don't find in traditional zoning, or at least in our traditional zoning, as well as, there are a series of activation standards, so aspects of the building that are to create that sense of interaction with the public, so street-facing transparency and articulation. So, and there are some of these things are more clearly explained later on, but the ground floor transparency is a 40% minimum, so again, to avoid the situation of a blank wall by requiring a 40% transparency. But it wouldn't be as great on the second story. So these are the kinds of things that we see, and these are the kinds of standards that were followed when Clint West's architect went to work for him. These slides touch on some of the things that I just said, the frontage zones and the active ground floor use are features of this particular area. The frontage zones, like it says, special areas in the corridor, emphasis on creating that center. And then also the definition of the active ground floor use faces and engages the public at large, et cetera. I'll keep going here. Something else that's specified in the building type page relates to the street type, and we have primary streets and secondary streets if a property is on a corner, but if it's not, it will have only one. It's pretty intuitive, primary, more volume, and much of the corridor is Roots, it's Shelburne Road, Route 7. And by having the primary streets and the secondary streets, you'll also have this notion of what's the primary facade, what's the secondary facade, and there are different standards that play out. We were talking about the build-to zone, and again, it's pulling the buildings forward. So this is a graphic representation. Now, one of the things to understand about this particular building type is that there's a lot more lot coverage, there's more intensity in the use of the lot than is allowed by conventional zoning. In this particular case, that building, or a building, meeting that building type and meeting those standards, is pulled right up to the edge of Route 7 and the parking is behind. Something else that's in the form-based zoning regs is this idea of not having vehicle parking be a prominent feature. So parking has to be beside a building, not in front of it. So this quickly is the site, but maybe have more interest is the elevation drawings. This particular building was approved by the Development Review Board. This is the Shelburne roadside, this is the back, basically, because there are those vehicles, like I said, the stacked parking takes place behind these doors.
This is not an example rendering, this is the actual rendering?
These were the, well, these are the, these are the elevation drawings for the approved building.
For that one.
Yep. And then the other, other sides of the building. But a different aesthetic from what we see typically in Shelburne, but something that is driven by the specs here in 3D, which may not be the most flattering portrayal, but this gives you also a sense. And I had mentioned the stacked parking.
Can you just pause? I'm just curious, so stylistically, and I, you know, wasn't involved years ago, was there a period, was there a time when a group from Shelburne sort of went through, for lack of a better word, catalog and sort of said, "Here are the looks that we are, we would like to incorporate in our form-based zoning"?
Sort of. I may still have the board. As part of the process, the consultants that the town hired presented sheets that were basically voted with stickies. And so there was an exercise, we also had versions of those that were on display during Shelburne Day when we set up in the summer before we developed the document. So there was public reaction to images of different building types, some of them local, some of them from other places, where there was a sense of the types of architecture that people liked and the things that they didn't like, and that feedback informed the building types that were specified.
Thank you.
Solar representation, is there anything recommended as far as still?
You mean solar orientation or orientation on the lot for solar?
Or encouragement to include some solar?
Okay, so two, two different things, I think. The regs, the form-based zoning doesn't have any standards that I can think of that drive orientation of buildings to capture solar. There are, there is a language having to do with provision of solar access, so, you know, if you're putting rooftop solar, there are certain specifications that have to do with its elevation and so on. Some of that stuff may be preempted by state law, but are you wondering, is there a mandate to do solar?
No, I was just wondering if the allowances were there, or if the builder, the developer goes in and sees that, you know, the town would encourage using solar. I mean, it's part of our energy.
It's one of our recommended actions that we need to build in, but...
Yeah. Well, I don't, I was not at the hearings to know whether or not at any point someone said, "Hey Clint, are your, is your building going to be able to support a rooftop solar installation?" If you're asking, is there something in the regs that says you must do it, I don't believe that's the case. You may do it, and it would be encouraged, but I think that if the town wants to move in the direction of somehow implementing a requirement for solar generation, then it would cover everywhere.
In terms of being ready for it though, and Stephen, you might know this, I would imagine that most roofs, in my limited knowledge of solar implementations, is that most roofs should be able to support solar panels. Like they, I mean, they're not, right?
They're like three pounds per square foot additional, they're not very much. But if that's a, like a ballasted roof with... But if that's a, like a ballasted roof with stone on top, then to, to retrofit that for solar, they'd have to put pads down and stuff like that. If they knew they were going to do that already, they would have those pads in place.
Much less expensive now than later.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Doesn't seem as though it would make sense for us to encourage it, though overtly.
I think so too, yeah. It's, well, we wrote it into the town plan.
Should I say it again?
I, yeah, yeah, sure. That'd be great.
Because it does make sense to, to have us encourage it overtly. I mean, that seems to be the direction that we're going in.
That's where things went for the plan, yeah. We, we do, keeping in mind that the form-based zoning process started years ago and went through that whole process, and then the town plan revision came after that, and we do have that recommended action. So this is something that I imagine over time would then fold back into these regs. Um, the, the thing that caught my ear, though, was Dean, your point about uh potential height restrictions and things.
Yeah, so there are, there are exclusions. So it, it is accommodating. Um, and the language I was trying to get my fingers on, that I do finally have now, is um, is what's here. Use of solar thermal and solar voltaic, photovoltaic techniques in the district is highly encouraged. So it is stated explicitly that people are encouraged to do it, um, to use solar. And then the height language that I was um referring to is under the height encroachment uh exception. So these things um may exceed the limits um provided that they don't go more than six feet. But like I said.
Is solar one of them? It's hard to see.
Yeah, sorry. That's the highlighted one, and I'll make it a little bigger. Um, and like I was saying, some of that may be preempted by the state, state law now. But long story short, Dick, it's encouraged, but the, the bylaw didn't require it.
So as one of those recommended actions, and this is where we start navigating things since we have two sets of bylaws, if we're gonna make an update in one, we need to do it in the other while we still have two, and form-based is optional.
I would think we would start making a run at going to one.
I, I think ultimately that's what we want to do, but part of the reason for these case studies is, is to really understand that um you know, form-based zoning has been out there, but to my knowledge, there haven't been many projects that have chosen to use it and figuring out where we can get over these hurdles.
And it's, uh, well, I'll talk a little bit later, but um, I think it's, well, Brian Precor, who many of you know, former member, former chair of this commission, whose family owns property in the corridor, uh, said just the other day that, you know, he has looked at the form-based zoning regulations, and I think they're, you know, he's, he has an architecture degree. He's not practicing as an, well, he does architecture in uh, in his work. But um, his observation is, it's really complex. It's not the sort of thing that, you know, you pick up and you just go, oh, it's really easy to see where I start and where I finish. It's um, it's complex. And that could explain why some people don't think about using it, although typically if they, if they make an inquiry and they're asking about the zoning, we'll say, well, given what you're talking about, have you thought about? And we'll give a sort of thumbnail explanation. But generally speaking, you can do more under form-based zoning than you can under conventional. And under the conventional zoning, um, the number of, of residential units might have been, it might have been three or something like that, and Clint's doing six with the five thousand square feet of his business.
I think that, and that's one of the challenges for this commission over the near future, is to, to figure out how we can make that simpler and more approachable. Even if that's something where we partner with somebody to put together, like a, a wizard to guide somebody through the form-based zoning, if they have a particular building type or property in mind.
Yeah.
How would that work? A wizard, you mean like a software wizard or?
Yeah, something, I mean, that's the analogy that I'm trying to bring, but.
You can pick up a lot onto that, onto that computer and pull the lines around and tell you what you can do.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, an app. Um, I will say that Brandy's work on the, on the document did include some formatting and organizational improvements. So it, I think it would be better. Uh, if those changes were adopted, people would have a slightly better reaction to the document overall.
And that's a good point. There were some, because those, those updates that we started working off on before the plan came in, we never.
They're on the shelf.
Completed, they just all got put on hold.
We kind of set it aside for the plan.
They're, they're ready, I, yeah, they're ready for a discussion about whether or not you'd warn them for a public hearing, I think.
Right.
So the second case study is um, it's funny how Route seven um used to go um in one location. Uh, some people think of it as old Route seven, um, but it's labeled ninety-three Webster Road. Uh, this is the area that is south of the Jug Handle, but it's the case study that I described as, you know, the one that didn't work out. And what was going on with this project is a proposal for a lot to be divided, um, an existing house to be uh carved off from the rest of the land, and at some point, maybe that would be converted to a duplex. Um, and then six lots for single-family homes, and then another duplex. So it would be um nine, nine units total. And so it's a different type. And in terms of the location or the, the scene for it, um, as described, Webster Road, the intersection with, with Route seven, Shelburne Road. The Trinity Baptist Church is located to the south, so it's another landmark. And the lot that we're talking about um is right here.
And did this, did they decide to do conventional zoning, or did they just go for project?
This was a proposal uh to use form-based zoning uh to do those, that nine lot total that I mentioned. It would not have been possible, this is two acres, it would have been more like four or five under conventional zoning.
The error was that they had to put that section of road in, which would require.
You're stealing my punchline, Bill. But Dick's right. So this, this particular graphic um has the corridor for the future proposed street on it, so that you can see it here. This lot is wet in the easternmost portion. Um, but there is this street that I'll talk a little bit more about. Um, so down on the southern end of the regulating plan, um, we have uh the Green Corridor, that's one of the character districts, Business Campus. And we have the mixed residential character district right along here. And we also have this dotted blue line, which is labeled on the regulating, regulating plan as a future road. And this is the lot that we were just looking at right here. So the.
That dotted line was part of the form-based code document?
Yeah. So, so the regulating plan uh includes these future roads. Uh, there's, there's some up north, there's this one on the south, and they're pretty conceptual. And um, they are a feature of the regulations. And um, so just to touch on the, the character district table, building type. So here um, we have all but two, which was the case before, but some of these are only when you're affronting on Shelburne Road. So some of these building types wouldn't have been allowed, um, unless you were on Shelburne Road. Um, and they are opting to use the single-family building type, same basic layout, the images, the description, the different standards, and the graphic representation. And we can drill down, but this is what I was gonna show you having to do with the future streets. Um, in the bylaws, it's got this language, future streets and paths. These corridor designations generally identify potential locations of future streets and paths that would enhance. You can, you can read it, but it's um, it gets around the fact that it's somewhat conceptually located by saying, while the feasibility and appropriateness of this would be determined at the development review pro, level at that process. They're in the regulating plan, and they're deemed important to achieving the desired development pattern. So it's a, it's a pretty serious ask, but I'm not sure that in the end it's an absolute ask. Um, and furthermore, there's recognition that the, the dotted line on the map is, is not set in stone, and that there can be some variation. And in fact, in their application, they noted that they needed to move it a little bit and divert from that, that sketched location. And the uh initial reaction, I think, was that that kind of diversion was okay. But this was a case where, you know, I mentioned before, this having it be faster, more predictable, checklisty um manifested in the engineer for the, for the property owner reading the regs, seeing that the regs say future street goes right through the lot. So the path, no pun intended, to a quick approval would be to incorporate the future street into the plan. So that's what they did. And there was a little bit of um complexity due to the fact that um they wouldn't, you know, until the other sides of the street are completed, you wouldn't gain access by that street. So there would be an access drive until such time as the street becomes complete. So there would still be a way into the, the development from Webster Road, just because it would be the only way of access. But that segment, north-south segment, would be incorporated.
So the development was dependent on that proposed street?
It incorporated it, it had the corridor reserved, but it recognized that, hey, these house sites need access, and the access would be coming from a, what was deemed a, you know, kind of a long-term temporary drive until such time as it was no longer necessary because the access could be provided by the street. Additional language that's in there, um, you know, this idea of street connectivity or street networks is, is really a big part of the form-based zoning regs. Each character district upon build-out is to have an interconnected network of streets. So that's, you know, part of the basis, the logic for having the regulating plan include those kinds of things. But it's a tough thing to pull off. And what um, well, I'll just before, I mean, I think it's, it's worth just highlighting that the um, it, there's recognition that these things are important, and they won't happen all at once, but someday they will happen. Uh, so if you're doing something and you're next to a place that has started it, you will continue the street, is the basic idea.
Can, maybe to state the obvious, but that is the challenge with growth in a currently developed area. And if memory serves, I don't know if it was this one or something different, but there was a, an objection from the public saying there's this dotted line, and, and the individual said, and I own one of those properties, and I'm never gonna change it, so the road's never gonna go in. And I think that's kind of what stopped the discussion.
Yeah, yeah. So the property owners to the north, the family that has owned, uh, owned it for many years and has multiple homes there, yeah, their reaction is, was what do you mean, road? What road? Um, and so they were, they were critical of the development proposal, I think, largely because they were, they were not in favor of the idea of this road coming through. Because they felt like, hey, you know, you can, you can maybe require us to build this road if we were to redevelop it, our site, but we're not gonna do that. So why are you, you know, why are you doing this? Um, so.
We wouldn't, sorry to interrupt. The main reason I bring that up is because those are the types of challenges that we're gonna repeatedly hit with any of this kind of growth, and so I, um, that's the thing that we should be thinking about in terms of um, like, in, in that case, I don't know how to diffuse that situation other than to say, well, the, the language all states that this is until a future time, that maybe that never happens.
Yeah.
Like, obviously, the owner has control of what they do. If they decide to take that whole property and make it Vermont Land Trust, for example, then, okay, there wouldn't be a road there.
Or if you're trying to create some kind of character to the property, could it be a walking path instead of a road?
Well, that was part of the conversation that took place when Brandy was um, was working with the commission, because I think there was, there are two prongs to this. One is the network for cars, and another is the network for pedestrians. And I think people are a lot cooler with the idea of some kind of framework for the pedestrian network than for the car and uh network. But how the, how the requirement of the regulating plan played out with their proposed subdivision um was like this. So you have them incorporating a road that meets the road type in the location, generally speaking. Uh, and like I said, they would, they were using a different type, a modified alley, there's an alley road type. Um, and that's how people would get to these lots, and the house is built here, and the house is built here, until such time as this was really the street, that would someday provide the main access.
And Dean, was that alley, you know, allowed to be narrower than, it looks like it was half the width of the proposed road?
So um, yes, they called this the temporary access road, and so just, uh, your timing is perfect. So just as there are a series of building types in the, right, in the uh form-based zoning, there are a series of street types. And those vary, and one of them is an alley type. Uh, but in the same way that the building type standards have a lot more detail than what we see in our conventional zoning, um, the street type pages have a lot more detail as well. And I'm trying to think if I, so yes, the, this, this is the design. Um, one of the things about the form-based zoning regulations is that there is a bit more flexibility when it comes to the design of streets than uh some other things. So there's a uh way to get a waiver or to get approval for a, basically a variation of a street type. Uh, and that's what they did. They, the developers' engineer started with this alley type and then proposed some modifications. I don't remember exactly what the profile is, but uh, what they used, we may be able to figure it out. But in this particular um standard, it's a twenty-foot wide right, uh, right-of-way with two eight-foot travel lanes and two-foot shoulders. So, pretty narrow. But.
It looks like it's as wide as, as Webster Road is on the, on the plan.
Yeah. Let's see here, let's see if it's.
Maybe I missed this. So this property owner selected form-based zoning because they could basically get more properties, more parcel, more units onto the property.
Yes.
Had they selected conventional zoning, would this road have been an issue? They would have had fewer properties.
They would have fewer houses.
Fewer houses, but no road.
But there would not have, there wouldn't, we wouldn't be looking at the, the regulating plan and seeing this line and reading language that's associated with it that says, oh, you have to build this road. So there wouldn't have been any of that kind of discussion.
If we only had the one regulating plan, form-based zoning, they would have had to put this road.
If, if there was, right, if there is no conventional zoning, um, and the map is the regulating plan map, then y- yeah, but we're not.
We're not.
When we, when we combine them into one, there'll be a conversation about which features. The thing I would um say is that street requirements like this in a lot of places, including Vermont, we haven't talked about official maps in a long time, and it's a confusing term. But state law um says there's another type of regulation or tool that towns can use to help plan their growth, and they're called official maps. Uh, and what they are, are maps that are a lot like that dotted line. But they're their own thing. They, they get adopted through their own process, and um, they come into play when people are developing land. Now, just to put official map into a little bit of context, they're often about roads, but they're not only about roads. And the big controversy in Heinsberg regarding the supermarket, um, that project uh hit a lot of the hurdles it did because Heinberg, Heinsberg has an official map, and the determination was made that it, the project didn't comply with the official map, which just has its own set of things. But if we look at official maps as primarily a way to plan the location of new streets and the roads, um, we could do that along with conventional zoning, but if we. But if we collapse it all into form-based zoning, we could do something like this. But the issue is people need to know about these future roads. And we have to be ready to facilitate the approval of projects that include them or have a better community consensus that we need that line on the map.
To come back, can I just, to come back to Dick's point though, it seems to me that we're never going to find success with form-based zoning as long as there's a dual zoning option because you're always going to have neighbors who might choose something else.
Well, that's, that's probably the number one thing I hear about, why are we, you know, we're undermining our efforts if we give people the chance to do something different from their neighbors and kind of undo the benefits that are provided by the type of design that the neighbor who's using form-based zoning is. Yeah, I think if she was here, she would say that.
I think though that going back to the map, the issue against it is when you put that road in on other people's property, that you go to borrow money to do something, a project, and the bank sees that on an official map, that may depreciate the value of your land. And the other thing is people look at it as a taking.
Yeah, it seems as though you might almost have to have some kind of eminent domain in order to accomplish it.
So the thing about official maps, just to give the 30-second commercial on official maps, is that it's not taking. The way that official maps are intended to be used is to show a road like this. So let's say Shelburne went through a process and said, we really need a road corridor in this location and we want to put that on our official map. The adoption of the official map works this way. It says to a developer who owns property in that area, hey, we'd really like to see a road in this location. And if you're doing a project, we'd really like you to follow it. And in many cases, they will. But if there's a developer who doesn't want to, it's not a mandate. The way that the official map process works is that it sets, it sets a clock running where a town, if it was, if it felt that it was so important to put a road in that location, they have a period of time to acquire it. But if they don't, if they're not ready to pay to acquire it, it expires and then there's no more consideration of the map. So basically it forces the community to say, we're ready to buy this person out so that we can get a road. Most cases aren't like that. It, the road alignment is done carefully enough and with the cooperation of enough property owners that they get it. They realize that, oh, I've got something to gain here, like Dick was saying. And if, you know, if the line shows that there's going to be this access here, it could add value and they may like that.
What's the time period for the?
What, I don't remember the timetables, but I can send that out. But the commission has had conversations about official maps. It seems like every three or five years it comes up. But they're often misunderstood. And I think maybe it's easier to do them for things other than roads. South Burlington also has an official map and they've used it a lot for paths.
I do think that's a good point though. And I think what you were saying is that a property owner could feel that a potential road could, could hurt their property value. Is that what you're?
Bike path?
Or whatever. Yeah. I, I would argue that given growth and what the possibility is, that that opens up, that it would more likely increase than decrease.
Guess I would say we would want to be a lot more careful about where we put these lines.
Totally agree. But this, this is one of those subtle pieces of, if this is to work and there was a huge process to get to the form-based code that we have. If this is to work, we, we need to be able to address those situations and work with neighbors and, I don't want to say sell, but to communicate the more broad vision and why this is a good thing.
Maybe we do try to sell something like this. At a time you approach the people that own the property and say, this is a proposal that we're doing. And what kind of impact or what kind of, how do you feel about it? And here are the good selling points.
Yeah, I think some outreach should be given.
And once it's accepted in that respect, then maybe that's easier to do.
Did the people that are, that were trying to develop this, that they get their neighbors on board like Dick's saying?
No, they, so this is, this is a project that stalled and-
So that might have had something to do with it stalling?
Oh, I think it very much had.
Everybody's, everybody's stopping there too as opposed to it. This, all the developer, the landowners below it as well.
So were they relying maybe on the, the planning and zoning office to exert some pressure on the adjacent, adjacent landowners?
We don't have-
Did they just swing in?
I mean, I, I had conversations with the person I know who's in the family that owns the property to the north and tried to explain, you know, basically the ground rules that are found in the regulations. And they, you know, explained that the application was done the way that it was done because of this kind of checklist mentality. Do the things that the regs call for and it should happen more quickly. But that doesn't mean that the person who lives at the property next door agrees with those requirements and agrees with the idea of the road. And I think it was just a fundamental disagreement with the idea of the road. And the project that was being proposed was, no pun intended, the vehicle for that road. So the project was getting hammered and it got through, got through sketch plan, but didn't go any further.
I'm still, I'm still a little curious of the mechanics though, because even if that was done for planning ahead, and this isn't, I'm trying to imagine this in a neutral case. It's not, not about names or who is specifically involved or anything. But that, that property alignment that's up there right now, if that, that fits form-based zoning, the idea behind the road would be a longer term, whether or not it connects north and south, depending on how things go. I, I don't understand why the project could not have just still gone forward.
I think that it could have. I think that it could have. But the, and I'm getting into speculation, but I, I think that the person who was doing the project, she's not a developer. She owns the property, but is not a developer and just didn't need that, that acrimony. But, I mean, one way of looking at the situation is to say to the neighbors, okay, we know that you're not, you don't plan to, to change things, but at some point someone might. And then at some point, when that happens, there might be a development proposal. And if these, if these ideas are still in play, then the next section of the road will be built. No one's telling you, you must build it. It's, it's kind of like if, if this design had been submitted, but there was no regulating plan map, or if it was like this kind of, like something that was shown to people only, you know, okay, you're in the club, so you get to see this. If there was no connection to that map, I don't know that it would have, they would have had the reaction that they had.
You don't think that there was some kind of a NIMBY thing? I don't want nine houses next to what used to be open land next to my house?
There were some complaints too about stormwater runoff. I think the natural grade brings it south. So there were, there was some, I don't know how, how real it was, but it was.
I mean, generally speaking, if, if you're doing infill development like this, the more houses there are, the more concerns people have about how much the neighborhood is going to change. And yeah, people are afraid of the impacts that changes in drainage will have and so on. So anyway, different location, different character district, not in a frontage zone, residential, not mixed use. It involved this front, it involved this future road idea. But the applicant had a engineer who read the regs and was trying to do the things that the regs foster as a means to get a quick approval. But it, it really just ran into more difficult kind of community reaction.
You could say too, the character of the neighborhood itself is a big change in density.
So the, the last example that I had, and there were a couple of cases somewhat like this that I might have used, but I ended up going with this one. This is 4253 Shelburne Road. We've had some conversations with the owner of the property about some different things that might work. We'd actually had, the town had had conversations with the previous owner who had various ideas. It is in a different district. It's the mixed-use neighborhood. And what this district is intended to do is have a mix of new residential uses with expanded commercial, smaller scale buildings. And again, the whole street connectivity idea, new interior streets. You know, you can read the description. Pedestrian connectivity paths and things like that. And I, I pulled the description of the character district into this one because I don't have a set of plans to show you in quite the same way. I can talk about some of the issues though. So where we were talking about before is down here. This is up a little bit further across from the Rice Lumber site, south of a little development that was done several years ago. These small-scale, almost cottage-y, age-restricted houses are here. There's a daycare center to the south. But this is the property. It's got a very, it's got limited frontage relative to the rest of the width of the lot. It has floodplain in the rear. That does limit some of the options for the lot as a whole. When it comes to calculating development potential under, well, either zoning form, it does, it does have less development potential than you might expect if we didn't have the flood, the flood zone. But this is a district where all of the building types are allowed. So you can do, you can do any of the building types. So for, for someone who's got a parcel with, with, you know, limited strings or difficulties attached, you can do any of the building types. And that gets you off to a great start. Now, there is another table in the regulations that has some limitations on uses. I haven't talked about the restrictions on uses. I didn't include it in the slideshow. But the general principle of form-based zoning is there's a lot, there's a lot less attention given to the use that takes place. The emphasis is on the building type. And as long as you build the building the way that town is asking, the use is secondary. But it isn't off the table entirely. We still do talk about it. But this is a property owner who, given this particular situation, I think was thinking residential. The thing to understand about it is that there's a building in the front, right along Route seven. It has five apartments in it. And the building is still sound enough that there's, there isn't the desire to just knock it down and, and work with this site as a blank slate.
How, how much difference was there between the form-based zoning and then the regular zoning?
In terms of the yield?
Was it significant?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if, I think, I think I've got some of these numbers here. So it's, it's about four and a quarter acres. I just wanted to give people a sense of what it looks like. The, the property line is right here. And what I'll talk about in just a second is, oh, first, the history. This is a site that's complicated due to the fact that there have been some variances granted. People tend to like variances because it means you can do something. But variances under conventional zoning can actually make it more complicated if you want to change things later. But I'm mentioning that there are variances because a variance that was granted in the past doesn't always mean that you get to do even more. But it was variances that allowed the five apartments to be built. That was a variance that was granted in 1999. It doesn't have as much frontage as was originally required. It's 117 rather than 200. We used to have lot width restrictions in the conventional. It has reduced front yard setback. It doesn't have the side yard setback. So with conventional zoning, Dick, the challenge has always been one of the same issues that's been a problem for them with form-based zoning is if they're not ready to take this building down, then putting in a road alongside and having the road wide enough and not creating a setback problem on the side of the building that the road is located on. So it, it, yeah. When the road would be created to, to do some major development in the rear, if they were going to split off a lot and do a residential subdivision, the, the catch is the setback that would be necessary from this building to the edge of the new road. That's one of the things that has been kind of perennially a problem for this property. And it's also the sort of thing too, that makes it difficult to consider things like PUDs. The regs are different now. The conventional regs are different now than they were in the past. So this conventional zoning has gotten enough better that that may be one of the reasons why they haven't been sold on the idea of form-based zoning. Because the conventional zoning has gotten better, but it's still not an easy site to develop under form-based zoning, or conventional zoning, I should say. So here are some of the numbers that I wanted to show you to answer Dick's question. So 4.4 acres. It's got 1.2 acres that don't count because of the flood in the calculation. That gives you about 140,000 square feet of development potential. If you're doing apartments, you need 10,000 square feet. There are five apartments already, so that's using up 50,000. So if you were going to be trying to put in single-family, you could put 15,000 into 90,000. If this, these numbers are approximate. So you don't get a huge development potential. If you're looking at trying to put in a little cottage-y type residential development in the back. If you are looking at putting more apartments in the back, you can do 10,000 into the 80 or 90,000 potentially. So would someone be, you know, interested in building a-
Four unit building?
Eight unit building back there. And then like I said, there are these access issues. So this is where I wanted to turn to the form-based zoning and the multifamily building type. It would be the way to go if someone looked at a lot like that, didn't have the access issues and was willing to follow form-based zoning to get more numbers. Because instead of having 10,000 square feet required per unit, the multifamily building type says that the first three take 2,500 square feet each. So 7,500 square feet total for the first three as compared to 10,000. And then after that, it's 2,000 square feet per. So you get, you get much more density, much more development potential under the form-based zoning. However, the form-based zoning has a restriction on the total number of units that can be in this building type. And you can't have more than 24. And the conversations that I've had with a couple of different property owners gives me the distinct sense that that number is a problem for them, that they're not as interested in using this building type or form-based zoning as a result because of that cap. So that may be something that we would want to take a look at. If the idea, if the concern is limit the scale by limiting the number of apartments, well, you could have really big apartments and you might have a pretty, really big apartment building. Or why not limit the scale by setting a maximum square footage of the entire building? You know, let that be the control.
So Dean, if, if I understand you, that the number of units that they, somebody could put on the site was too small, too low to, to be of value?
No, no, the concern, the thing, well, the, the, maybe the per square foot costs of a building that has fewer than 24 in it versus maybe they wanted to do twice that. I, I don't know if that would be an explanation. But the access was also a problem because of the need to have, assuming the existing building stayed there. need to have, assuming the existing building stayed there, you would need to have a wide enough right-of-way. And there's not a lot of room on either side of that. There's more room, I think, on the north, if I remember. But figuring out the access is one of the problems. And also figuring out, do you carve off the existing building and put it on its own lot? And then what kind of complications does that cause because you've taken it out of the rest of the parcel for development? You know, you've basically taken it off the table and you can't incorporate it into your design if you're just going to be creating a single-family house.
But that's a -- that problem applies to whether it's conventional zoning or form-based zoning. That's not specifically a form-based zoning issue.
No, the access and the setback, it's a different set of numbers because of the different street-type requirements and access requirements that you find in conventional and you find in form-based. It's the same basic idea that you have to figure out the access. The other thing that I was going to say is that this issue that has come up here is that somebody wants to do a form-based zoning project, and there's already existing development on the lot. The form-based zoning as written right now doesn't make it clear about an easy way to develop while the existing house is there. It's not that it's not possible, but the path to doing it isn't really clear. And I think the fact that it's not really clear gives people pause because they'll look at a situation like this and they may say, "Well, do I have to carve off that existing house and put it on its own lot and then put everything else around it? Or could I incorporate it into the development as a whole?" Well, the traditional zoning says you can only do that in a PUD. And this lot has some challenges as far as PUD is concerned. You can do multiple buildings on a lot in form-based zoning. You have to get conditional use approval. So that multiple buildings on a lot under form-based zoning is, in my view, not a huge deal. It's not a deal breaker. But people wrestle with this question of, "Well, what's the best way to handle the existing development and then also do the form-based zoning stuff?" As long as they want to keep that house. Like I said, the house is evidently in a condition that it's still got value. I don't know how many, you know, if it's got 40 years, 100 years. I mean, I don't know the building. But it's not a situation where the lot was purchased with this idea that that lot, that house was going to be gone and it really made a clean slate.
So the thing is, if I -- I'm trying to understand the problem with that you're seeing. I thought you had heard from developers that said that 24 units wasn't enough units to make it worth it.
Well, this
But I would assume that if it was 24, that's more than conventional zoning would allow.
Right. Yeah.
But then the other thing is that it -- form-based zoning isn't set up to look at an existing part and a new part as a comprehensive whole, even though the first example that you showed us, the driveway was going, you know, like right up against the building.
Yeah.
That wouldn't be able to be applied here in this case because
Well, if they get a
It's an existing thing.
If they have a proposal for a modified street type and they can work within the space that they have, the answer is, yeah, maybe they can. The developer in the second case study, their engineer, their property owner, their engineer proposed a modified type. We don't know what the ultimate outcome was because it never got to the end. But on paper, at least, there's that possibility that the DRB could have said yes to that.
But going back to the very first example, which was a successful example, it seems like, I mean, the parking is right up against the building. The whole driveway is right up against the building. It's right up against the street. And was the issue that this property owner chose not to use that model of development that they
Well, here, there's already a house right at the street.
Yeah. But
It's a road versus parking. The road is the issue.
Yeah, getting, snaking the road in.
Which for some reason is different than a parking.
Because there's not even
Yeah. Right. Because this, there would need to be a right-of-way established for a road going across the property. And if it's two different lots, and this were a couple of different scenarios, if the idea is carve off the front and get access across the front lot to a rear lot that's developed under form-based zoning, yeah, that could work. But raises the question, well, does the front lot undergo a form-based zoning review even though there's no new building and so that you can get a waiver of the street type? Maybe. I mean, it's
Wouldn't that be? Is it just not spelled out that that's possible to do?
Yeah, so that when it comes
We need to look at some wording
Well, Brandy
Form-based zoning regs that would specifically allow that thing, that kind of procedure to happen?
Brandy's proposed changes make it a little bit clearer. But this is an instance that's really peculiar. And the change, the language that she proposed changes to doesn't -- it doesn't drill down to the specific instance of a road needing to be narrower so that it can pass alongside an existing building, which may be, you know, left in the old zoning, but to provide access to land in the back so that it can be done through form-based zoning. It doesn't get spelled out that clearly. But knowing what to do in these kinds of situations would be of benefit. We just would need to figure out, well, how do we want the language to read so that someone could pick them up and they could know that, oh, in a situation like this, I can keep the old building on the same lot as these new buildings. I can propose an alternative street type, and it's not going to be the end of the world for me to get the approval for that, and it will fit. You know, the numbers will be there and they'll be able to predict that the road will fit. The thing about this particular site, though, is that the issue with the building type and the apartments, I do think that there are people that think that that number constrained to 24 is problematic and maybe having to do with things like elevators and stuff like that. So I've heard comments that would suggest that people would like that number to go up. But before I lose my voice here, the thing I wanted to do is to just run through the other numbers. You know, so we were talking about, you know, six or seven units here, depending on what's ultimately going to be laid out. But under the form-based zoning, substantially higher, you know, we could see between 40 and 50 apartment units. But you couldn't have them. I mean, you wouldn't necessarily want them in, you know, one massive building, but it wouldn't be possible to do them in a building greater than 24 units.
If you had a
The way things
Three-story building, six units per floor.
Sorry?
If you had a three-story building with six units per floor, you would think it was
I'm just -- I'm giving you
I don't know what the cost of an elevator is, but it would seem like you could do a couple of
Yeah. I mean, one of the
Those buildings.
One of the things that the form-based zoning would allow is essentially to connect two buildings above the ground floor. And I think the thinking might have been that that could possibly serve the upper floors of one building from an elevator in another building, but that might not meet code. But in terms of the numbers, form-based zoning, if you can do a project substantially higher, and it's not just apartments, there are cottage, the cottage building type, these cottage clusters, there's possibly room for three or four. And the maximum number of cottages in each cluster is 12. And you could also do a large number of townhomes. So again, the idea is that it's difficult to know exactly what the right thing is. There are choices and people have to sort through those. I don't know that I need to. This was, these were some sketches to just show how if they were carving off a lot for the existing, they've got to make the setbacks work. And it gets, it starts to reduce the area that you have to work with. Yeah. So I don't know that I want to do too much more of that. So we were talking about that. And maybe that, I mean, I, oh, so I did, I had mentioned waivers before. Waivers are possible. Certain things, it's a little bit easier to predict that you could get a waiver for than others. There are criterias specified for granting waivers. But there are also certain things that you can get waivers for spelled out. One of them is street types. The situation, a situation involving a lot that has existing development may also get complicated by the fact that there's a nonconformity on that. The form-based zoning does have a section. I don't know that I need to get into this because it's really more of a traditional zoning thing than form-based zoning thing. But it does need to be addressed in form-based zoning. So there is a paragraph on what we do with nonconformities. But I think we've probably had enough. I'm going to just skip ahead. I mentioned multiple buildings on one lot. It's a little bit easier in form-based zoning. You just have to, you just, you have to get a conditional use approval as opposed to putting an entire project through a PUD. So that's something that is, I think, generally speaking, simpler. So I boiled down some of the reactions. I had, and they're here, simplicity, easier to understand. And then there are some things in the form-based zoning that may discourage people from using it, this number of limit. I keep coming back to that because it's probably the simplest example to use. Something else that's in the form-based zoning are stricter than the conventional zoning's stormwater requirements. What do we do when we're redeveloping a site, clarifying that? And then, I don't know if it's really so much of a form-based zoning language thing as it is the process that's used to prepare the regs, and that's to address the neighbor opposition. It's really to have more consensus for the things that are in the form-based zoning. It certainly would have been easier for someone to do a project that was proposing to build a section of the road if people were generally in agreement about the need for that road.
Dean, what, how are the stormwater requirements stricter in form-based zoning than conventional?
So Shelburne, when we were writing these, matched them up with what was going on with Shel, going on with South Burlington. And basically, the requirements kick in at about half the normal size. So it's been a while since, I'm not going to be able to rattle them off from memory. But basically, jurisdiction is captured earlier in smaller projects than under the conventional zoning. And for someone that's doing redevelopment on a small lot, and they don't have to meet certain requirements if they go the non-form-based zoning route, they may say, "I'd rather do that than have to incorporate, you know, fairly significant stormwater management into my form-based zoning project."
Okay.
So does that mean that in the long run, it might be better if we were to raise the stormwater requirements across the town?
Well, it
Because that's what we're aiming for in any case.
Yeah. Yeah. So this is really just highlighting the competing goals that the town has for form-based zoning. Because a big part of adopting form-based zoning was to try to find a way to rejuvenate the corridor and encourage new development or redevelopment. And, you know, a big part of that, it's economic, of course. But if that's a principal goal and you are trying to make it easier for people to do those things, and what you're hearing is that these things are holding you back, then the town may want to consider. But if the overarching need is a water quality need, then you make it the same. And basically, people will realize that if they're going to be in Shelburne, they're going to have to meet these regs. But they may also decide that, well, I go to Shelburne and I do these, and I go to South Burlington and I, you know, or some other place, Milton or wherever. Yeah, big picture. What would you like to do, Jason? I mean
I need to hear Brandy's.
Yeah, ultimately, I think we need to get into reviewing those things that had already been pretty much ready for warning proposals for, revisit that, and see what modifications we might want to add to that to start addressing some of these things. I really do think, I know we had our conversation, that working around form-based zoning is a big driver towards, once the new plan is in place, that's just a really good thing to focus on. We were gaining a lot of ground with it. And the fact that we have projects that either stalled or were given up on, we don't want that just to be the pattern. We do want to encourage the development that we want to happen here. So these things need to be approachable, and that's our role.
In terms of the next few meetings, we can
I mean, do we bring back the Brandy's changes and start diving in there and seeing where the current board sits?
Yeah, I'd kind of like to see those.
I think it would be value to review that. I don't know if it's, I don't know that it's necessary to print out the entire thing and just do that for every meeting. But at some point, there might be a need to have it, for each commissioner to have a copy, and then we work on different sections and
Yeah. Well, we can start by doing a summary of the things that are changed in her version so people can start to wrap their head around it.
It's also a balance, though, because the changes that are in her version mean that there's a baseline to understanding what was there in the first place, which most of us weren't around for that. But I do think that that's a great place to start because we've done a lot of work there. And it's something tangible we can work to that's not dependent on the plan being approved, but
Yeah.
is applicable.
So the PDF is online. If someone really wants a paper copy, we can provide you with a paper copy. It's
Brandy's PDF?
It's a PDF, big PDF, yeah.
What's the name of it?
I can send you a link. I'll send everyone a link. It's, if you go to the town's website, though, and you use the search box and you type "form-based zoning," it'll be the first thing that comes up.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a good discussion, though. I think that's a great intro and understanding some case studies to understand where some of the challenges are that can shape future discussions.
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you for that.
Projects reflect the three different zones that have been put in for form-based zoning, so that each one of them gives an example of some of the different problems?
Well, the examples
It seems like there are at least two.
Well, there's other character districts. These address three different character districts, but there are some other ones as well.
Yeah. Not every character district is included. I was deliberate in trying to do case studies from each one. But there's a character district that's more business campus. There's one that's more conservation-oriented. So there are more than we covered tonight.
It seems like before the planning commission launches into a major overhaul and edit of this, that it would behoove the group to decide. I mean, I don't know how it's decided whether form-based zoning is the only, or if there's always going to be this alternative. Because it's like, to spend months and months and months refining something that still won't necessarily be effective doesn't seem like a
That's valid.
... time unless really the goal is to get this to be the one and the sole. And therefore, looking really at both and trying to look at compromises and
This is a good idea because form-based zoning is just a name. It's just zoning.
Right.
Two programs side by side.
And ultimately, we want
Maybe there are things we do want to maybe merge back a little bit on to kind of
Mirror the town plan that's proposed and will be soon
Find a center, yeah.
Approved.
We did have that report also that Kate was involved in a couple of months ago that
Yeah, the presentation at the development conference?
Yeah.
When you say at the report?
Yeah, was there in, I mean, we got a briefing on that, but did we get that? Yeah, was there, and, I mean, we got a briefing on that, but did we get that?
I mean, I wouldn't say that there were, that there was a tremendous amount of feedback, except for, yeah, it's difficult.
Yeah, we just got it very short. I'd like to know a little bit more about what, what the, was there a report done at the end?
There wasn't a formal report. There was a, a night when we had a conversation and there were slides for, we talked a lot about a couple, and then the rest were summarized in the other slides. Yeah, but there was nothing more formal than that. I mean, I think, I think there, there are some key questions, though, that involve, you know, do, we're doing this form-based zoning experiment, what's the best way to carry this experiment forward? It isn't being used right now. If you were to ask me, I would say, it's not being used for a combination of reasons that include, it's got some disincentives in it, it's complex, and-
And it's geared towards bigger buildings than what are currently the fad to build for, I mean, we're out of the box store thing. We're not looking at large structures anymore, at the larger structures. They were talking about actually utilizing some of the area for stormwater to be incorporated into parks and to generate a place for stormwater. That was the one thing I took out of that.
Well, Kate, yeah, Kate has been a champion of this idea of more, I'll say, network stormwater management than just onsite stormwater management.
Maybe making the sites more appealing for people to wanna be wandering around, and instead of just trying to bring all these brick buildings up and lining it up, you know, doing a church street.
Well, I think a lot of this, there's a lot of things going on, and one thing that would really help is a, like an economic development committee, which is something that Mary raised at the select board meeting on Tuesday. Having, it's conversations that we've had with the Small Business Association as well, where, yes, there are a lot of ideas out there, but these properties are currently owned, and ultimately, it's up to the owners of those properties to decide whether or not they want to do something with them.
Some of them are very satisfied with what they have.
That's true. I, I think there has been, over the last couple of years, there's been a, and maybe since form-based zoning started, the idea is that eventually we'd have one, because I think it just makes things a little overly complex to have two, but we're not in a position, I, I think, going through some of these and seeing these recommendations and recognizing that there are improvements to the current form-based zoning that has been approved, that we'd wanna make that more attractive and ensure that it fulfills what it is that we're trying to get at before we say, okay, we're gonna move to this single one. And that involves a bigger process of understanding the bits in our current code that may not be in form-based that would benefit to be in there.
Yeah.
And I, I'm honestly not sure what that exercise looks like, but it's probably not gonna be un-tedious.
If, if the, if the adoption of the form-based zoning as an optional approach was intended to, to prove the concept, it hasn't been proved just yet. I mean, the one project that we have had approved, I mean, it's a good example, but it's, it's not of a real large scale, and I think we've got a lot to learn from having more implementation take place, and we've gotta look at things that are holding up more implementation, and I think some of the changes that Brandy worked up would do that.
I, I agree with that, and I also like the idea of, the idea of an economic development committee, because then you can look at areas that then could be, like, go and talk with property owners and float ideas and get feedback and understand what might be feasible. Because at the end of the day, if you have a project, it could be the best project in the world, and if there are neighbors on both sides that say, forget it, not happening, and that leads to the second example that we had, then nothing's gonna happen.
That, the second one was, that piece of property getting into form-based zoning was kind of like the last thing that occurred. And I know we discussed whether or not it should even be involved, so we went and kinda swept into a neighborhood that was a little bit more, what was it, zoning there, I don't remember, it was a half acre?
Uh, maybe.
So we changed it to eighth of an acre, third of an acre, I don't know what we did, but, and we put a, and we drew a street, we drew a line down without blocking the site, and then apparently, the upper end of that whole area is wet, very wet, from drainage from the other built neighborhoods, and there was concern in the lower end. So I think, you know, we created a really nice thing on paper, but we didn't get the, the work done that we should have probably, somehow, I don't know how you do that, how we do it from here, and we need an engineer or something.
Well, it, it certainly requires more case study-type work, and, and that's where there should be an effort. The idea of having collected areas or hubs that have been proposed in the past, or even the stormwater concept of having collection areas, like, that, that won't happen on its own. That needs to be driven through some mechanism. And I think that's one of the challenges we just have to figure out, and that's gonna be working with Small Business Association, if, if we can form an economic development committee to do some looking into it, get feedback from property owners in certain areas. I think it's a, a bigger, more coordinated effort that we're kinda scratching the surface on right now.
Shelburne is small enough that you really can think about these things parcel by parcel, almost, right? Like, that one that we talked about wasn't really ideal for that, but yet, you can think of abandoned business areas that don't have a lot of neighbors, and you can think of really positive changes that I'm sure everyone would embrace.
Unless you're the property owner that doesn't wanna do any of that stuff, right?
That wants to defunct business on their property, I guess, sure.
I, I don't get that either, but I'm, I'm sure people have reasons.
I'm sure they do. But if the town then made things desire, you know, made it easy, there were incentives involved to, you know, I think you can, you know, be focused on particular properties maybe with that economic development committee.
Yeah, that development would have been a nice little cottage site, or what we were trying to do in a rural area would have been.
And, and works towards goals that we had in the, in the new plan. But a, a question to the commission, as far as next steps, I mean, I, I feel like we're, we're not in a spot to make major decisions, but kind of pecking away at getting more familiar with form-based zoning and what could be done, and maybe in trying, first, starting with Brandy's changes and revisiting that, incorporating recommendations and getting those discussions going, and then seeing what we can branch off of that with in terms of economic development or perhaps accession with particular landowners.
Maybe remove a couple of things from the old plan and incorporate them into form-based zoning, might not be a wholesale, get rid of one, but making it more valuable to go with the form-based zoning.
It also seems like that there might be some value following a discussion like this to consolidating in the form-based zoning what some of the options can be in an area for change. What, what kind of flexibility does this give you so that we're combining things and you don't have to go to 75 different pages to be able to figure out what's going on? So that a landowner who might be less familiar with building codes and zoning regulations, but who is looking at how they envision their property in the future can look at this and really understand it. I think when you start reading a town plan and you're reading the regs and then you go and try to do it, what I see often is people coming and saying, well, this is what I wanna do, and they haven't really looked at the options for coming to change before they go and try to do it.
It'd also be interesting, this has come up before, but I, I don't know if this is something where either some motivated high school students or college students might be interested in taking on a project of saying, hey, Shelburne has this zoning option, and there are properties, and what are some ideas that you have that fit within the constraints of the, of the zoning options that we have? Which just, if nothing else, gets a conversation going and gets them exposure and credit and whatever. Yeah, I think it's a good start, though. Would we be okay with starting with Brandy's changes and at least continuing down this path for a little bit?
Sounds good to me.
And see where it goes. I, I don't view this as easy, at all.
You mean, unhard.
I started the sentence and couldn't just say tedious, so. All right, so Climate Economy Initiative?
Yeah, well, this was-
Before I make up other words?
Mentioned in the report or the cover memo that it would be an update. There is not much to report in terms of any kind of concrete steps being taken. January 18th is still the deadline for filing a proposal. There have been lots of parties, including the planning commission, that have, you know, indicated this is a good idea, you know, would be supporting of it, but there's no specific plan that anyone has offered to propose, let's do X, let's make the theme of our application Y and submit it, and first go to the select board to get an endorsement, because there needs to be a select board endorsement. Even if it's not the town that is making the proposal, the town select board needs to be on board. Trying to think of how much I wanna try to say. This, the idea of submitting a proposal under the program is something that's been floated as part of materials that I've prepared as part of the budgeting process. It's not an idea that caught fire, but of course, there are a lot of things going on right now, so it would, it would take some spark, I think, for people to really latch on to, to submitting it. This idea came to my attention through kind of the standard emails that I get, but it was these two folks right here who were the ones who, you know, who said, hey, would Shelburne be a place to make a proposal? And I think it, I think it could be, for sure, but no one has said they're ready to make the proposal, to draft it, they've got the ideas, get folks on board. I did outreach with a, a number of different folks who I felt like if there was a proposal, but together, those groups, or those people would need to be part of it, but no one has stepped forward to say, I'll do a draft and, you know, let me know what you think.
It just seemed to me as we were going through this discussion, that there's a lot that we've been discussing all night that could be grantable, and I'm not that familiar with what the RFP looks like, but then Business and Professional Association has been talking about this for a long time. Natural Resources Committee reviewed it slightly last night and said, although we're not, we don't feel like we're central to it, that we would be really interesting, interested in being partners to it, and I think that a proposal would have a lot of strength if it were a coalition of the planning commission, the business association, and the natural resources committee. I mean, we're talking about things like stormwater and regulations and making them clearer, and if there's a way that we can get a nugget from what you've been talking about tonight and say, let's get some funding that's gonna support us in completing this, we just have to come up with a concept pretty quickly, because it's only a week and a half away.
Well, this, this particular RFP, really, I think the thing that's lacking is, is somebody to just say, hey, I'll, I'll drive putting the, the RFP together. I, I would agree that I think there's broad support for something like this. To Dean's point, there is a lot going on, and, and I think that's where there's been a bit of a dearth of people jumping up.
What we need to do is, what, what we need to do is have something to write the RFP about, and so-
Well, we did with two things, and it has to, it has to address two core items having to do with energy and transportation. I mean, if we can choose what those things are as the core, and then we can do any number of other things, but the application or the proposal will need to, to pitch ideas related to those two things.
And, and that's where the, as, as much as I don't wanna admit this, I think that's where the confluence of everything going on and getting on the select board's radar, like, I'm fairly certain that most, if not all of them, would support this. But looking at, and you had some slides in the packet just explaining what this process would look like with months one through 12, yeah, that even if we had those nuggets, at this point, we're looking at, this needs to be filed within eight days.
Right.
And if there was somebody saying, hey, happy to do it, let's sit down and, and meet, I, I would certainly go and meet and offer ideas, but I haven't heard anybody really step up to do that, and I don't feel like we're in a solid place without that. Which is just a thought, but-
Yeah, just to say that, as Gail has said, SBPA, based on our sort of engagement in the business community, would, I think, be a very logical partner in this, but SBPA, frankly, you're looking at two-thirds of SBPA right here, you know, because, I mean, there's a lot of people belong to it, but the active core is about six, six or eight people, all of whom are busy business people, except I'm retired. But that's, I'm not volunteering. And so, really, our conversation two days ago was to say to you, we think we could be very helpful, very supportive, but that we don't really have the people power to be the ones that would, as you say, sit down and in the next eight days, create the document.
Which is the common theme.
I would be happy to sit down and brainstorm, how can we refine the kinds of things that we're all trying to look at, and then, and then sort of sit down and try to put something together. Thing is, I'm gonna be away all next week. So it'd have to be in the next three days, as opposed to the next eight.
Yeah, and that's, that's where, when I, because I, I was excited about it when I first read about it. I think it's a great opportunity, for sure, and I've had some outside conversations with people that are involved with the program, and, you know, even said, I mean, the, the general vibe that I got was, you know, that there are going to be multiple towns that apply to this, two towns will be selected, and based on the criteria that, you know-
Maybe we could try to marry up with one of them.
That, well, there is a provision in there as well, that if you partner with other towns and make a case for that, then that's a big thing, but again, getting back to eight days and not having a leader-
Not even as prepared as we are, because we don't know if they're talking about it.
Right. Now, but at the same time, I don't view this as discouraging. This is a, for one, this is an annual thing, so knowing about this now, knowing it's out there, and that's good, so we could put more emphasis on this next year and actually plan for it. The other thing, though, is we might be in a better spot next year because of a lot of the things, once the plan does get approved, there are a lot of things around energy. Based on the meeting, the select board meeting on Tuesday, there is support for a lot of things around energy and the sorts of things that this grant would help out with. So we can still pursue that. We're, one of the things is to revive the, the energy subcommittee that was initially put together just to help with the town plan, but there was interest in doing work around that as well. A lot of those members were interested in doing more work. So there, there are opportunities to explore things within the framework that we have, and then perhaps put us in a better position for next year. Unless somebody hears this, somebody watching at home or something and says, yes, I wanna do that, then, you know, please reach out, right?
Should we turn around and face the camera?
Yeah, here's the pitch.
Because truly, I mean, when I, when I look through the material initially, and you start at the beginning and see the process of, of application and getting support and so on, it sounds pretty daunting. When I read the final reports from the towns that have done them and saw the projects that they did, you go, yeah, we could do that.
It's completely feasible, absolutely.
They're totally, totally manageable, but it's sort of the structure you have to commit first to, to get there. I quite like the idea of maybe setting up a, a committee-
Going for the year.
-to work, starting now, because could actually even sort of give us a head start on the day one up there, of having actually some real projects in mind, not just a theory.
And that's, at least, speaking frankly, that's, that's where I am, because we just put a lot of work into the town plan, and it hasn't been approved yet.
It's not finished, yeah.
Like, I'm, I'm hopeful, but I'm not holding- And I'm, like, I'm, I'm hopeful, but I'm not holding my breath that, that there aren't wrenches that could come into play. So I really just want to make sure that that is stable first, and then that does have a lot of provisions in it. I know Jerry, the Chair of the Select Board, is really interested in understanding priorities and how they align with what the Select Board's thinking, and that ties into our work plan that we pretty much decided, and I'm open to suggestions as well, but decided to start with form-based zoning, because that's a big chunk of economic driver for the town, and just getting that moving to make it not a hurdle for developers.
And I think where SBPA thought that we have a role is that we have the contacts with all those business people, and if there's a way of having us serve in some way as supporters or ombudsmen or something when it comes to developing some of those properties, we can be here with suggestions. And if we're working together with you and also with Natural Resources Committee, I think we can have the resources together to make the whole process simpler for people.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, agreed. That'd be great.
So do we have a plan?
You sounded like you were going to be calling a meeting of the planning group.
Economic Development, Planning, Planning.
It sounded like you were.
And this is where, there is a lot going on right now, and I, I'd like to see some representative coordination across various boards, just to start aligning on some of these things so that we're not disparate. I mean, I'll openly admit, there's a lot that the DRB does that I don't, like, I don't, I don't follow that on a week-to-week basis, so I don't know. Same thing with the Select Board, for that matter. But there are key things.
Been to a lot of them.
I know that you're a regular.
But might it be sort of realistic to say, okay, in March, the week after town meeting, we would actually call a meeting with, asking for representatives from the town committees and so on that we think would like to be involved? And just put it all out on the table and see what ideas are out there and who's ready to help.
And these are discussions, these are things that are being discussed, and I've, I've had these things suggested to me, and I've suggested them as well. It's more a, you know, we just went through the holiday period, and now the Select Board has three meetings in a row and hoping to get this plan approved. So the, part of the reason of starting with form-based zoning was because that's something that exists, and we're going to have to address one way or the other. So let's do this in the meantime until the, while all those approvals are being worked on. And then, once we have that in place, we understand that priorities are aligned with the Select Board, they're comfortable, I mean, Tuesday night was just their summary of the sections, and they're going to get into their public hearings. So I'm interested just to see how that all plays out, and I don't want to inject any additional confusion or complication or overhead until that gets done. So, yeah, I mean, March timeframe.
And in the meantime, we can talk it up a bit, you know.
That's a big thing, and that, that was one of the messages, and I was glad to have the opportunity at the Small Business, the last Small Business meeting.
That was such a great meeting. I think everybody came away saying, we can talk to those guys.
Well, it's good. We should be approachable. I really, it's, I mean, it, it helps with expediency in these meetings when there's no one from the public to chat for that 10-minute open period, but it also, that's our, that's the vector to get input from the community and know that this is an approachable process, it just might take time. And really getting people, the, the community aspect of having people communicate with each other and understand to streamline things a bit so that we can get away from some of the knee-jerk, nimbie reactions, which are easy and it happens to all of us. So, yeah, it's just really getting that feel together, I think, is something that we can work towards in this year.
Yeah.
Yeah. So any other comments or thoughts around Climate Economy Initiative, or can we move on to other business?
I think it sounds worthwhile.
It really does, and this is where I'm torn, because I'd love to see it happen, but a lot of people have been asked, and it just.
It's not a good time of year.
Right.
People are not energized.
But again, the, the plea to anybody watching is out there. So then, as far as other business, I mean, I mentioned the Select Board Town Plan summary.
I wondered if we could send them a note and prompt them if they have questions now or during their reading that we could maybe be prepared to deal with at the meeting? If they have those questions and they want to submit them ahead of time.
About the town plan?
Yeah, if they.
Yeah, I sent a note to each of the Select Board members before, before Christmas, just offering time and to field any questions, and I did have a conversation. And there may be more to come. Dean and I were there on Tuesday night, and they gave their summaries, and everything sounded pretty positive. One question that's a little, that's outstanding, and I meant to reach out today, and I didn't. I just wanted to reach out to Josh because I know that he was looking at the Natural Resources section, and I don't know if he was coming to a meeting or came to a meeting or something to gain clarity around things.
He met with me initially last week, and then came to our Natural Resources meeting last night to look for other feedback, and I think he's probably got a good summary under, under control at this point, because he got, he was really interested in finding out what our priorities were, because it was probably one of the longest sections in the plan. And we had a lot of priorities, but I think he's got a good summary of them, and will be able to bring them to the next meeting of the Board, which is next week.
Okay.
And other members of our Board will be there. I won't because I'm away all week, but.
Okay.
So if there was an email that I didn't have a chance to read, but at least one Select Board member who made comments on Tuesday had a set of bullet points, and I think she emailed those, and I'll circulate them, and I took notes, and I'll try to get them cleaned up so that those could go along. So people will have some idea of what the Board members were saying.
Yeah, and in general, my takeaway was pretty positive. I think that there, any concerns that were raised were either, I think, covered in some way as more detail comes out, or they're legitimate but not showstoppers or anything that would hold things up, but I don't want to get ahead of myself either. And the two public hearings are coming up as well.
The first public hearing on the comp plan, two weeks.
Yeah, in two weeks.
A week and a half.
So, any other, other business?
I'm looking at the wall because it's reminding me which things to talk about. I'm going to be sending out some email to bring you up to date on Act 250 Study Committee Report. It's not something that we talk a lot about in this group, but Act 250 is undergoing a lot of scrutiny, it's been in effect for 50 years. There is a report that was prepared, and it could result in changes, and I just thought it would be something of possible interest, particularly as we're talking about zoning in rural areas. But anyway, just heads up, I'm going to be sending you something about that. It may be pretty limited, but just to make sure that you are aware of it. Another thing that I was going to be sending out is much more specific. The Regional Planning Commission has a wing that deals with transportation, and I was at a meeting recently where I was reminded that they are doing a study that's looking at Interstate 89 from Williston to Winuski, basically. And you're wondering, well, what does that do to Shelburne? And the reason I'm mentioning it is because one of the ideas that's been discussed for a number of years, having to do with the interstate, is the creation of a new interchange in some area, let's say, near Route 116. And they'll sometimes call it 12B. And interchange 12B would provide vastly increased access, accessibility to places in South Burlington, Heinsburg, and Shelburne that, and we're talking years down the road, but that would mean significant pressures on land use. So I'm just giving people a heads up that this study is just getting started, and this is one aspect, the land use implications of things like the 12B interchange will be looked at. So if anybody's got an interest in that kind of thing, let me know, I'll send you a one-pager on it. But 10 or 15 years from now, a future Planning Commission, if there has been progress made on that interchange, could be talking about this thing on a pretty regular basis, because it would.
And where would 12B be, is that on 116?
Well, I think, you know, that's one possible location for it. I mean, this is an idea that's been kicked around for a long time, and, you know, there are never enough resources to manage the interstate as we have it right now, so it takes a lot of agreement to come up with a plan to do a project like that. So it may never happen. On the other hand, maybe it will. So that's a heads up. In terms of other things, the Housing Subcommittee had its meeting, the two of you are here, so for the two of you who are not, the Housing Committee will be coming back with the results of that. We talked about the Select Board discussion, I think, I think I covered the things that I was going to mention.
All right.
Can I ask a question? Is that 12B what was discussed to some degree when we were looking at alternatives to Route 7 back when they were widening Route 7 and?
I'm not a.
The question came as to where is there land to do that? Because it strikes me that if you're trying to connect Heinsburg and all that, that it's going to go right through all of our rural lands and conservation lands.
Well, there was something called the Route 7, Route 7 Corridor Study that was done about 20 to 25 years ago, very big picture, and it might have been mentioned, it might have been mentioned then. And it did, that study did look at the possibility of pulling some of the traffic that comes up from Virgens off of Route 7 and moving it to the east, because a lot of it is being attracted more towards the Essex-Williston area. And, yeah, that might have fit in with that.
Something that we need to think about in terms of our rural and conservation area if it were to take land there, because that would be up for taking, wouldn't it?
Well, the issue I'm drawing attention to isn't that the interchange would be in Shelburne. It wouldn't be built in Shelburne and wouldn't take any land and convert it directly. It would convert it indirectly. If there's a new interstate interchange, this is something that Vermont has wrestled with a lot, is the development around interstate interchanges. So even if you get beyond the immediate area of the interchange where, you know, there might be this desire of someone to put a gas station, you get a little bit further away. It's a lot, it's easier to get to that location. Its attractiveness for being converted to a housing development may go up. So as I think about it, it could put added pressure on the eastern side of Shelburne, which has historically been the rural part.
Only you say it better.
A good thing to keep an eye on.
Yeah.
And outside of that, a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second. Even second by dick, all in favor? Aye.
Thanks, everyone.
All right.